All right.
How are you, sir?
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Catherine's here.
Dempsey, here.
Fournier, here.
Grab?
Here.
McGarry, here.
Rick?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Okay, this is a work session in response to last week's comments that we had heard from the public and some of our business owners. We had some complaints about the homeless and we've been hearing some things but wanted to make sure that we address those as quickly as possible. And so this work session is in response to that. It's kind of an off-meeting week usually, so we just wanted to be clear that normally this body isn't held, a meeting isn't held on this week. This is because we are very concerned and we want to react and make sure that the businesses, the residents of Mount Clemens understand that we are taking action and we want them to know that we heard them and that that's why we are having this work session tonight. So I will open the meeting with that and we'll move to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you come to the microphone. You give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. So if you'd like to address the commission at this time, please come on up to the mic.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, city manager. Steven Saft Jr., 68 Clinton Street, also business at 44 Macomb. I shared these questions with, I'll need this, yeah. I shared these questions with Greg.
Well, you do though, because if not, it won't go on the, it won't go for the, yeah, you're good.
I shared these questions with Greg and Laura earlier, but I want to start by saying something. We have to change our dialogue about how we're identifying this issue. This is not a homeless issue. This is a mental health and addiction issue. Homeless people are normally looking for a home. They're not in the position that these people are where they're resistive of or have problems or situations that are difficult to address with what would be identified as the traditional efforts of, you know, human decency. We have people out here that are mentally unstable either due to unfortunate problems that they have or because they've compounded these things with the easily accessible little bottles of booze they buy at the gas stations or any other kind of a drug or alcohol they're getting their hands on. So homeless people, you know, we have, you know, a different element and I think we've got to be mindful of how we're identifying this so we're not stigmatizing those people that find themselves in situations where they're looking for a home. I'm just going to run through my questions. I don't know, I talked a little bit about it, Greg, on this on the street. I inquired about a vacancy ordinance. I inquired about a loitering ordinance because I believe, I'm not an attorney, but I believe that there's a different definition for the two legally. And Greg felt that there was a current review that occurred and that if anything, the city's ordinances were not contemporary with the latitude that's given to these individuals under the color of the law. So which brings me to the next question. Are there other ordinances or other things that we can adopt that are going to help address this situation? Those of you that know me know that I'm in town very early in the morning and I came in a couple of weeks ago, probably around 5:30, and there was a patrol car, sheriff's patrol car in front of the courthouse and they were placing, and everybody knows Daryl. I don't know, Daryl's one of our guys that, you know, he helps us out, he keeps an eye on things, he lets us know if there's a problem. But they were arresting Daryl because apparently he had camped out again on the porch or on the patio around the courthouse. So we're seeing enforcement happening. Am I, okay.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, can someone give me their minutes?
Sure.
All right.
Sure.
So we're seeing enforcement happening where the sheriff is removing individuals from public property. So this is happening, we know that it's occurring from that perspective. Now, I don't know what Daryl was doing that day, but within an hour, he was back on the street again. So they brushed him off, they got him in a car, and then he was right back out on the street. We have a problem in the morning, it just happened next door in Swetolski's, the old Baskin Robbins, where there was somebody asleep in the corridor or in the knockout. Obviously, they're there for a period of time. The girls come in in the morning, they're afraid, they're calling the sheriff's department. So I think at that time in the morning, we need to have somebody making a run through there at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock to check these places to make sure that the obvious and open problems aren't occurring. Same thing, a drive-through at the lunch hour, a drive-through during the hours immediately after work where we've got people downtown that were trying to get into businesses to service them and help our businesses. If we can't get these things addressed, then we have to seriously consider removing the remaining park benches downtown. We did this in Cherry Street and I think this is not a thing that I would normally encourage, but when you're walking the streets on a daily basis and you realize the only people that are using these benches are the guests that are not using the community the way we want to see it used, then maybe we just got to get rid of them all together. Which brings up, the next step is you've got a lot of flat surfaces that you probably have to then address with some kind of a architectural topper to make it so it's not convenient for somebody to sit on. You go to other municipalities, other cities around the region, and the only place you see a park bench these days is where? On a bus stop. You don't see these type of things within the communities anymore for, I think, this very reason. So if we got to get rid of the park benches, the stand-up tables that we have at Rotary Park, maybe more of those. You know, I see people using those with their briefcase laid out or their laptop for a lunch. I see business people coming into town and using those. But you don't see them using the benches because I think they're intimidated. Benches, toppers. All right, so that's my wrap, so.
Thank you.
And this isn't a parking discussion, but gosh, we'd like to talk about that too on another day, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I know what I was going to say. Those of you that have been around long enough know how Rotary Park was developed. That was the old two-door bar. And when Gabe Anton and Bob Vickery and
Chuck Gary.
Gary did the Vicant Building and they built Genes 3. Old Gabe, you know, he wasn't doing that to benefit the city. Gabe was taking care of his pocketbook. He wanted the courthouse people to come out and see that bar, see that restaurant. So they tore down the two-door bar so people would walk through that park. He didn't want people sitting in the park, he didn't want to see that. He wanted people to see that Genes 3 sign and walk across. That was built to promote business on the other side of Main Street.
Thank you.
Are you done?
I'm just getting warmed up.
That's all right. I got a strong voice. Mickey Weiss, 18200 Terradry, Clinton Township and the DDA. I have to say that last year, this time, right after my fall art and craft show, we had an issue really getting pretty bad in the Rotary Park. I was frustrated, the businesses were frustrated. I came in, talked to Greg and Laura and said, "We need a full court press. We need two weeks, we have to be relentless." And we have empathy, we do, but for this, we really have to have empathy for our businesses and people trying to make a living so they can pay their water bill, so that they can pay their taxes. So that worked. We had two weeks and it was amazing. People called me wanting, "Where are they?" I'm sorry to say this out loud, I don't care where they are, as long as they weren't downtown. People were being stopped on the street, people wanted money. "I know you got money in your cup in your car." And it was scaring people off. My job is to bring people into our downtown to create pedestrian traffic for our businesses. And when the people that want to come downtown feel afraid, that's not the plan. And we had a couple artists who were on Walnut last year put their sides up on their tent because, you know, they have their money box, they usually sit in the back, and they were afraid. I don't want anybody to be afraid in our downtown. I've been faced with a lot of things in 25 years and if you had 20 more to that, when I had a store, I worked late at night. I didn't have to be faced with that, but I will tell you that Artist Music Store was directly across from my store and it was empty. And every day, my trucks came through at 8:00 for me to get my products and they were homeless lined up, they would stand up, urinate, and then lay back down. And I had customers, we used to open our stores at 9:00 a.m., and I had customers, I had to make sure that these people were gone. And I called every single day. I had speed dial, and this was the Mount Clemens Police Department. And one day, I heard the gentleman sigh on the phone and I said, "I know you're tired of me, but I'm tired of calling you. Could you just come 8:00 in the morning, sweep through so that we don't have to call you?" It's not near as bad as it is now. It's bad. And as I said, I want to welcome everyone here. I'm the host to bringing people here. So we've got to try the full court press again. It worked and then we just got to stay on top of it. We can't let them creep in and start all over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Eric Super, business owner at 61 North Walnut. I just wanted to come in, it's a hard one to follow, but my main thing is, I honestly don't think it's a cop issue, I don't think it's the sheriff. I think they're doing a great job when they are down there. They could be a little more present or actually push them a little bit harder. I think it's more of an ordinance issue. I think it's more of a loitering issue or a, you know, just more issue on the this, your end of it to kind of push them out or understand, like, how do other cities do it? Maybe look at them, maybe like I said, look at Rochester. You know, they have a downtown district. Look at, you know, Birmingham, they have a downtown district. All these places have great downtown districts. New Baltimore, you know, they're up and coming, they have a huge downtown district now. They're looking to expand more and more every year. Unfortunately, Mount Clemens seems like it's kind of shrinking every year and year. And I think, you know, I've heard, I've had customers call me, "You guys open?" "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we're open." You know, I've called people, "Hey, you know, I haven't seen you in a while, what's going on?" They're like, "Well, you know, last time I was down there, I had, you know, issues walking through the park, I had issues walking down the street." You know, they came down for, you know, one of the Made in Michigan vendors, you know, they said we were out there and, you know, we were getting pressed by, you know, panhandling. Like I said, we have our group of homeless. I think Steve did a great job on, you know, we do have our homeless group, which I don't have a problem with. They help us out, we help them out, you know, they keep an eye on things. But, you know, it is more of a mental issue, drug issue. You know, it's starting to get violent. I know, I messaged you earlier this spring and said, "Hey, something bad's going to happen, it's getting violent." You know, I could just see the aggression. You know, me and my partner had to go across and break up a fight because a guy hit a guy with a rock across the head. You know, it was just, it was getting out of control. And that's when we came in last week to say, "Hey, we got to do something here." Back, I just want to reiterate that, no, I think the sheriffs, when they are there, they're doing a good job. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's more of a ordinance or just, like I said, we got to do something about, you know, taking benches out. It's sad because, you know, I mean, I like Rotary Park, I like, you know, the spots, but, you know, I watch people completely avoid, walk around everywhere, even like coming across from the county or from the court building. You know, we've lost, I would say, more than half our business from there because they won't walk across the street now. You know, I mean, they're staying away or just staying out of our area. And like I said, it's more of a, you know, I mean, I have my staff, they don't want to walk around, they don't want to walk out at night by themselves, you know what I mean? So someone's always there, we got to walk them out, we got to walk them down the street or, you know, here or there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Angie Beckett, I'm from 118 Canfield Road here in Mount Clemens. Did I have a planned one, but I'd have to agree with Steve's staff. Not to actually call this all a homeless problem. We do have our local homeless and with Daryl in summer and I've got to speak to them knowing that this meeting was coming today. It seems, and for when I've been for the last six years, we could have set our clock for when this comes up to be a problem again. And it comes right before winter and you have been, the police have been wonderful to always assist us. We've called and called and called, they come out when they call, so amazing. Again, I believe that it is more of a mental issue, not just that, but also a criminal issue. They're coming out of the courts, they're doing this, they're defecating, they're urinating, but not just it. I think I'm one of the earliest ones in town now, being the only one that comes in and there's just groups of them. And our locals that are homeless are actually scared and fearful. They're watching out for us. We're seeing more and more crime, but the defecating, the urination, the drugs that they're doing, right in front. We had to almost Narcan one, Ryan and I, like noon on a Saturday, right behind the van camp was unresponsive. I think with our construction too, we need a little more lighting again. The lightings are gone. It's really dark out there early in the morning and then I'm also there late at night. So if I could suggest that, maybe walkthroughs then, but don't think at noon when all the kids are there, we've got them hanging out in the corridors. Now that the construction, they're finding little holeways to hide. There's a lot of alcohol bottles in this that they bring in from wherever. And if we can get something on board, maybe a little more foot traffic, I think, before that snow flies, we can maybe get them out of there. I don't know, as business owners, if you could also address and give us more information what to do. A lot of them won't call, I've talked to most of the business owners, they're afraid they're going to be retaliated against. I have no problem and I probably have more phone calls into the police department than most, just for the issues, just to report for a wellness check. So, but it's hard to get everybody on board. If you can come up with a solution, maybe that we can work around that because they are afraid again, because this is becoming violent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing no one further, then we will go ahead and move to our city business, which is the discussion of policing the downtown. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Mr. Shipman.
All right, thank you. At the request of the commission, obviously, you wanted to have a meeting as quickly as possible. Sergeant Scott Jones is with us this evening. He's the sergeant for our substation, he's the daytime sergeant. And so, you know, homelessness, like we talked about, has never been a stranger to any downtown. It's not a stranger to Mount Clemens. Last summer, that dynamic seemed to change from what we'd been used to. We started having an influx of homeless people being bused in from Detroit. And then that's when, I think, just listening to everybody, that's what we noticed, things really started to change. So we had several meetings with Scott and we put a lot of things in place to try to deal with that. So Scott, I think maybe a good way to start this meeting is let's talk about what we have done moving forward and then can open it up to the commission for questions. Yeah, that'd be great.
So last year, when I came in, we started talking about this, we did increase foot patrols. They were doing regular extra patrols, but that was in a vehicle. City manager suggested possibly some foot patrols. We obviously didn't have a problem with that, so they're now doing foot patrols, obviously if it's not in inclement weather, but throughout this, all three shifts are. I swear I didn't pay him to come here, but he had a lot of good points. But, you know, doing a targeted patrol at 6:00 or 8:00 in the morning, it's not a problem. I can actually have dispatch set up a call to just automatically dispatch a deputy at the same time every day. For the businesses, when they open up in the morning, that wouldn't be a problem at all. Obviously, getting the word out to all three shifts anyway. They're doing them. Maybe they can do them at better times. From reports coming in from the businesses, that'd be fine too. We started enforcing the different ordinances, which are pretty decent for us, especially the closings of the park. But they still have other calls that they go on, they still have other parts of the city that they have to tend to, so it's kind of, once they leave that area, I mean, it doesn't take long for more people to come back, maybe it's the same people that come back. But, so it's a fight they're going to continue to fight, but it's kind of a never-ending battle here with that. Like the city manager said, we're having, we're noticing a lot of them are getting on buses from somewhere, we don't know where. Not many of them will talk to us, they won't answer our questions when we ask them where they came from. A handful have said Detroit, Wayne County, but most of them won't talk to us and tell us where they came from. But they're getting off the bus, so somebody's obviously giving them bus tickets to come here. So that's the other problem, is that we're getting new people almost weekly. So the regulars that everyone knows, sometimes they are a problem, but most of the time they're not. But it's the new ones that are coming in that nobody knows and then that's causing issues with all of them and all of us. So that's where we're at with that.
Do we want to open it up to commissioner comments about, or your questions and comments from Sergeant Jones? Yeah, please.
So you mentioned that our ordinances that we have right now are pretty good. Is there something else we can add to them, put more teeth in them? I don't know, what could we do to, because you mentioned also that you'd like to see some more ordinances and
Can I comment real quick?
Sure.
I mean, I guess more or less, like, what is
Never mind, I open up.
What is the actual park, like, time, like, is it
Dusk, dusk.
There is times.
Dusk till dawn, okay, so I guess that would be my, my thing is, okay, we're seeing a lot past that dusk mark, we're seeing a lot before the dawn mark. And, you know, I mean, that's kind of the time that we're having a lot more of our issues is, you know, lights go down and, you know, you guys come and they scurry and then as soon as you guys leave, they're right back.
So that's an existing ordinance that we already have, but isn't being enforced.
Okay, so that's, I didn't know what the timeframe on it was, but that's, that's great, so maybe
But isn't, right, but, yeah, but it isn't being enforced.
A little bit harder on that aspect of it. I mean, that's really, I just kind of
But it's not your job to enforce it, Jason, it's not, don't enforce it, call them.
I think he was saying we, as us.
Right, and that's what I'm saying to you, Eric, I mean, not Jason, sorry, Eric, it's, you know, it's, it's something that the commission has on all of our parks, that dawn to dusk, and so it is a tool that the sheriff can use, but I don't believe it's being properly enforced.
Because I've heard that they, you know, I mean, they only, you know, I've gotten told that they can only do so much, which I understand, but now that we know, hey, no one's allowed to be in this park, I can understand, watch them walk through, but when they're sitting on benches or the ledges or stuff like that, you know, I mean, now it's like, all right, hey, you know, underway or, you know, kind of push them
But you guys shouldn't, but I, that just
They come back to control again
But I want to, okay. I want to, I want to just be clear. You guys aren't the enforcers.
No, I'm not
And I don't want you to be. I don't want you to be because that is where things go awry, right? And that puts you in a bad position, it puts you in a bad position. So I don't want there to be vigilantes. Am I speaking, I don't
Sure, of course you don't, and that would not be safe.
That's right, the topic of ordinances, I just want to remind everybody.
Yeah.
It was about a year ago, right? So one of the first things I did was, because Scott and I talked about it, let's look at our ordinances. So I went out to other communities and I found some things that were tougher than we had on the books. And I brought these to the city attorney. And right away, they went, "Oh, no, you can't do that. Where did you find these?" You know, they shouldn't have this on the books. And so then I said, you know, "This is where these were found." They said, "No, that's not allowed anymore, those folks need to change these rules." And so I said, "Well, what can we do to ours?" Right? And if you remember, I brought you some suggested changes, which quite honestly, weren't going to do anything, probably. They were some verbiage changes on existing ordinances that didn't really give them any more teeth, but then it was questioned whether those even violated people's rights. And it was tabled and it was supposed to be discussed between some commissioners and the city attorney. And that was the last I heard of it. But we looked at this, okay, and we could not put anything on our books to give us any more teeth than what we had according to the city attorney.
Okay, so we've looked at it.
Okay, go ahead, finish. Yeah.
So is there something you need or you want to see, Sergeant, that would help you out there? Is there anything that's missing from those ordinances in your
We looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, so you don't, there's nothing
I mean, I'd love to make up some laws, but you can't do that, you know?
So there's nothing that, when we talk about that, then, there's not much we can do, right, from an ordinance perspective?
Well, as far as
Yeah, we tried, okay.
You know, and I tried and I actually went to different communities that had it, you know, that I knew had downtowns and probably could have a problem with this or solve a problem with it. And, I mean, one of the ones that I wanted was the loitering and a lot of them had time limits for loitering, which I thought was great. And it is great, except it's not legal.
State law, Trump said, right?
So, I mean, it's on, I'm not going to say the communities, it's on their books, are they enforcing it? I don't know, you know, but
So we'll look at other things then, and
Sorry, Commissioner Helen, sorry. Commissioner Helen was raising his hand, so.
The last time this came up, actually, this is part of what encouraged me to look at going back to school because me and Mr. Who've had such lively discussions about this. You know, as I've mentioned before, I was homeless, I'm glad you made the distinction between people who are homeless and those experiencing mental health issues, those experiencing alcohol abuse and other issues. And part of that was, you know, I was, it was, I, when I was homeless, there was a night I was outside, actually, and I grew up in Oak Park and went to Ferndale, downtown Ferndale, went into a CVS and I was loitering. I mean, I, you know, I mean, it was, no, it wasn't, you know, some of the things you're speaking about, you know, fighting, these other issues, I wasn't doing that. So there's a clear difference, I'm very glad you brought that up, and the respect that you all have for the people who are down there, I appreciate that. When those ordinances came up last time, there were some that were, well, they were good. There were some that were, like you mentioned, they were, they went very far, some of them weren't really legal, some of them were, you know, I talked to lawyers, I talked to people at the ACLU and they said, "These are things that we've already challenged before, it's probably not a good idea to even go there." And so I am, I'm all for doing whatever we can to make sure it's safe downtown and looking at, you know, more ordinances that could work. But to me, like you mentioned, if it's, the main issue, what this comes back to, which we're not going to solve this part tonight, is there is a huge lack of services for people who fit under this umbrella of homelessness and substance abuse. I grew up in Oakland County, which is the richest county in Michigan, and I ended up in Macomb County, which is a very nice place, but the services weren't there. The services really aren't there, especially for men in Wayne County. And so other parts of Macomb, Wayne County, they do just send them here because there's nowhere else for them to go, anywhere else. So that's part of the problem, I think, working, you know, I know that our community partners here are aware that we have these issues. I know that some of them have, for decades and decades, have been working on them, some of them successfully, like family, face to I know that some of them have for decades and decades have been working on them, some of them successfully, like Family, um, Face the Addiction Now. Um, that we've partnered with, um, and so it's just a start, um, so, not trying to filibuster here, but.
No, I'm, I appreciate it, cause it brings up what we've done and how we've, we've tried to help with this situation. Yeah, I, I, I keep saying it.
Because somebody that's just truly homeless, we can find help for them, like, we, we find help for them, and you can't, right, Theresa knows more than anybody. This is a different problem, it's a different dynamic, and. You know, and I can show you how old I am, and we can talk about Governor Engler back how many years ago that took away the services, right? And, I know, but, I mean, that's really when it started, and it's just gone downhill since, but.
But I, I feel like, I mean, I, I think it's a misnomer that, you know, we're just here. Barking out, out orders at the sheriff, saying, you know, fix this, but we also have been taking our opioid money and making sure that it goes towards. Um, helping with this specific population, right, on the streets, meeting them where they're at, right, and trying to work with, making sure, yes.
Yes, I mean, we can start from the premise that I don't think any of us feel like we're not doing things, but the problem is still there, so. If it's not the ordinances that would help you, I'm thinking of some of the other things that were suggested, and I think that what. Our businesses are feeling, a lot of businesses are feeling, especially, you know, other places, especially over the last year, this has become a hot topic. I think the lighting, better lighting is a great idea that we should, you know, pursue, figure out what we can do. Changing the landscape, like removing the benches, is another thing that's often suggested, those are tangible things we can do. I, I do think that when the law enforcement stays on top of it, it does discourage them. If they can be shooed away and come right back, they're going to, but if we're right there to shoo them away again, eventually. They'll consider going elsewhere. The other thing, I, hey, we haven't talked about that, I think is worth, I don't have the exact answer, but I think. Empowering the retailers to feel that they're more prepared. That they, um, so it might be a training about, you know, how you feel or how you approach people, or. I think that we could.
DD immediate, uh, it was a, yeah, or a retailer's meeting, it was a retailer's meeting, wasn't it? Uh, was one of the meetings, the business meetings, and you came in to do exactly that, Commissioner, yeah.
And also, another thing that, as far as the businesses, I told them, well, some of them this before, and I've told a lot of them, and when I have contact with them. When I'm working is, that you can always call and, and be anonymous, I mean, there, you don't have to be anonymous to the dispatcher that you're talking to. But we don't always have to come and talk to you. So, if, if somebody's got a problem outside of their business, you can just tell us, hey. We don't wanna see you, cause we think, you know, some, there could be some retaliation, but this is where it's happening. And then we'll come, and then, but if we're not told that, and we're told, but let's say your mother's is the caller. Well, if we show up and what's happening, or what was written in our call is not physically happening in front of us, we're gonna go talk to the caller. Which was a problem in the past, one, one time, at least one time, um, where the deputies went to go talk to, to a business. And they were like, oh, well, they're upset, because then, now the people that they called on knew who called. So. You can tell us ahead of time, any business can tell us that, we don't, we do the same thing for citizens, if you see something suspicious outside of your house. You can call us, we'll check it out, we can give you a call back, we don't have to come and talk to you physically.
Commissioner, you're, actually, I, I stand corrected, we did do it, but I think it was right before you came, it was Sergeant O'Brien. Who did, so now we have some new businesses, you know, so we could do it again.
Escalating or continuing, so whatever we did, we can build on, do more, do it different, offer it to more people, but I think. That doesn't solve the problem, but I want people to feel more comfortable as retailers or business people. There's a lot that goes into how you feel about how you interact with those people who are causing you distress. Um, but just some tools that might make them feel more prepared.
Commissioner, go ahead, yeah.
I had just one, I had two other thoughts on that. I think one, one point that you mentioned that I think is important is that some people told you where they were coming from, where they gave you some information. Some were not interested in talking to law enforcement.
That doesn't mean they all came from.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I mean, but they're coming on a bus traveling north, so.
I think there are some, um, some street outreach programs that. Uh, I guess just the sheriff's office partner with any, you know, street outreach programs to try and reach out to some of these people.
Not that I know of, but.
That'd just be something I'd be interested in seeing if there were people who, you know, uh, not to, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, but. Um, if there were people who, you know.
People would tell me how to do my job, so.
Uh, and then the second point was, I mean, there are kind of, uh, they're, they're kind of two. This is kind of like two separate conversations going on, right, there's, um, the public safety concern. Which, I mean, I, and when we went over it with the ordinances. I mean, it, it is tough, I don't know how, it's really not a way to predict it, you know, someone who gets off a bus is gonna be a real issue. Until they are an issue, right, at that point, it's a problem for somebody. Yes, um, and so, I mean, it's. I, I don't know what we can do on that front.
Well, on, on another note, I'm sorry for interrupt, but we do have places that are still feeding them regularly, daily.
So what do you mean, like, like a rest, restaurant star? Oh, the churches, right.
I mean, they're daily, multiple times a day, they're feeding them.
And so they'll.
So, why wouldn't they be coming back, and why wouldn't they be telling all their friends, hey, you gotta come up here?
So.
This church here, casting self-bound grash, feeds us well.
I, I think you're making the second point perfectly, then. This is a discussion that we shouldn't just be having with you, it's a discussion that. We should be having with the nonprofits in the city, not that they shouldn't be providing them food and these services. But that, there, there needs to be a plan, I mean.
Well, I don't think any one thing is to blame or anything like that.
Oh, yeah, no.
A lot of things that add to the problem that we're trying, trying to solve.
Right, yeah, and I, I, I'm just saying. You know, I, I. I, I wish that there was a, a plan for, you know. I mean, people are coming here, right, they have no plan, so they know, there's things, there's Mount Clemens, I can get help, right, and then they come here. And, you know, maybe they accept that help, maybe they don't, maybe they've got other things they're doing, there's criminal activity. I just. You know, we're not like, you know, I know we, we, we keep hearing Rochester doesn't have these issues, these are cities that don't have how many shelters? You know, these aren't cities that have a Salvation Army, you know, churches that are doing this. And, and these are good things that are happening in our community that are helping them, I'm thankful for these, right, it's the reason I'm up here. All I'm saying is, I would love to see us, th- this is, it's obvious that this isn't just on the city commission. That it's on us to work with these other organizations to see what they can do to help, you know, spread this out. I think it's, the problem is that it's, there's so much going on downtown, right, if it's one or two people a year, which could be in any community where they have that. It's, it's just, it's fine, but it, it seems like it's happening a lot, as you mentioned, and so.
I mean, go back to what Steve said at the beginning, right, we have our true homeless that have been around, that go to the Salvation Army. And go to McRest, and they're allowed in McRest, because if you are on drugs or alcohol, you can't get in McRest. And then there's the other element, the guys that were stealing their bathroom supplies, wrecking their bathrooms that they talked about last week. All those kind of things. Beating, yeah, beating each other. So. I don't know if the churches are really the, uh, solution to that, I, I just. Those people, we have to, they're, they're truly committing a crime, correct? I mean, if you're stealing the bathroom supplies and wrecking the, you know, your mother's bathroom, those people are truly, but you have to catch them.
Yes, but we, yep, but we also need a complainant on that.
Yes.
And also, a lot of times, uh, somebody doesn't, they don't wanna be a complainant. So there are certain crimes that we need a complainant on, we need somebody to say, yes, I will follow through with charges. If we, if we have a business that says, I just want them gone, get them out of here.
It's good to want.
Our hands are tied sometimes.
Yeah, I get, I understand that, if they're not willing to testify or report it or let you know, what the heck can you do?
And it's not that we actually ask them, hey, are you gonna go to court, are you gonna testify, you know, we don't get into it that in depth, but a lot, most of the time, a lot of places, a lot of people.
They're pretty vocal about it last, last week.
Houses too, with family issues and stuff, they don't want it, they just want the problem solved that minute, and. Some of them, yeah.
And that comes back to what I was saying, maybe there's some training or preparation or something, we can help mitigate some of those things.
These are small business owners that are taking care of a business, if we're adding the, uh. Ambassador position to them with people who are creating problems, this is taking time away from their core mission. So it becomes, again, I think, it's great to hear from the city commission, the efforts made from the ordinance standpoint. So we know that that's been exhausted. What we need to hear then is, I think everybody's been given dispatch number to call. And if people aren't willing to make that call and, and respond, then, you know, they've gotta have somebody that, that is willing to do that. Everybody's been equipped with that through the years, maybe it's passed that out, the DDA's made sure people have had that number. The, it becomes then, I think, a matter of telling people, if you've got a problem, get on the phone. And call it in and identify it as, as clearly as possible, and be prepared to respond to a question. And if you're not willing to do that, then keep your head down. The other thing is, what are we gonna do about the park benches and the flat surfaces, is that something the city is willing to undertake? I think those are the only things that you guys realistically can do unless you win the lottery.
Yeah, I think that's, cause we did mention the park benches last week, and then the comment was made by, uh, one of the business owners. That they sit on this low bench or, or a low wall. And so, yes, we'd have to do something about the low wall in order to prevent, prevent that.
Distract kids from using skateboards, yeah, there's, there's, there's products out there that can be installed.
Yeah, and. If you look for information on effective strategies.
I just wanna, sorry, I feel like we're having side kind of bars, and I also feel like we did set a work session. And we have, we, we do have to be mindful that there is public participation and that there is, there is the body. And I don't wanna not have dialogue with any of you, but we set precedence then for other work sessions when we. If we wanted a town hall, we have to set a town hall, there's Robert's rules, I have to follow the rules, because then if not. Poor Rob will, when somebody comes and says, what, you don't, that person talked and you didn't let me, and then, then I'm violating First Amendment rights. So I just need everyone to kind of start following the rules here, only because I think there could be implications, if not, maybe we need a town hall. But I, I, we have to work within the parameters of this, because it is unfortunately. Rules. For a reason, yes, what were you gonna say, Commissioner?
I think you've covered it, I, I'm not gonna. So, I mean, it sounded like there were a couple things that, uh, like the, the, um, additional patrols at certain times. That the sheriff's office is gonna take on. And so outside of any additional things that the sheriff's office, you know, might do to try and, uh, do more prevention on this front. Outside of the ordinances that we could do or that we already have, I guess my question is, leaving this work session. What's next, what do we, what?
Well, I think that your suggestion of removing the benches, um, I mean, I think that's a real possibility.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, putting the toppers on, I, that solves the other part, or doing something different with the wall.
Do we close off Rotary Park? It's, shouldn't be open, it should not be open after dusk.
Yeah, I think signage is another thing about loitering or closes at dusk, like make sure we have clear signage in those areas. Improve lighting and visibility and modify public places.
I also wanna, when you say improve lighting, there is a city responsibility to make sure that we improve lighting, but as a business owner. I have a responsibility to make sure that my building has lighting, right, and, and that's on the exterior, your buildings have exterior lighting, correct? I mean, when you have, I, I mean, this is a city, this is a city problem, we, and especially right now, when. Angie, like, I know you're talking about it, and you're shaking your head, but we definitely don't have. What you, but your landlords can. I know, exactly, this is a problem, okay, I, I get it, but what we're saying is, there is a responsibility of landowners to, and I, and I, like, for example. We just talked with a land, a, a building owner, um, that owns, uh, the, that corridor of Cherry Street Mall. You know, the one that's just walking that hallway, because there were some things happening in there, and we said to him, cameras. And lighting, right, will deter a lot of activity, and so he has been cooperative and working on that. That's all the city can do in terms of, right, we, we, we are encouraging, I'm just encouraging people who do own buildings. And people who do, because that, that does deter activity, right? The city can help partner in that, in terms of providing streetlights, right, and things like that, especially during the construction, like you're saying. But we also can encourage people who own buildings to also take that step further. And cameras are also, I mean, you can now get camera systems very inexpensively because of the technology that, that is out there. So I would encourage that as well, um, again, the city, um. It was put in a Facebook post today that all I'm telling people to do is call dispatch. And that is something that we are telling people to do, because it is an important step, we need to inform the sheriff's office and the deputies, so we need to do that. But also, the city has implemented things, and we can encourage also to continue to do that and partner, so. Signage, I heard, um, for the, to let people know that Rotary Park is closed at dusk. Um, we talked about removing the benches, we've got these things on a list, so, um. We're gonna have increased, um, patrolling, uh, that is foot patrolling, but also we're gonna have increased patrolling. And in the morning, seven AM, eight AM. I'm looking at you, not them.
I was asking.
I had earlier, but if, if eight's good enough, we come way earlier, so eight, you know, just so it works with everybody.
Um, and then, um. Uh, what was I gonna say, but also, again, all three patrols, eleven o'clock we keep hearing is a problem, eleven PM is a problem. So, you know, we, we need these kind of targeted patrols, I think, um, to try to remove the activity. Yes, Commissioner.
So any signage we can put up at or near bus stops, um, with, with any type of information? I don't know that it would.
I don't know, but we can think about that, like, we could maybe think about, like. Like.
If there is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but let's think about it, well, I was also thinking, like, when we were talking about all this stuff. Another thing is, we've been talking about committees, remember? And when you said, maybe we should, like, try to get the partners together and stuff, that kind of made me go ding, ding, cause you're really, like, I mean, you have a. I mean, I feel like this is something that you're passionate about, right, and invested interest, so maybe, I know you just have started a class, so I don't mean to. But, but you get what you ask for, which is a committee. So I was thinking that, like, yeah, something, this could be good, yes.
What information were, we were asking, what information were you talking at the bus stop?
I am just throwing ideas out there, I'm not, I don't have anything.
Like resources or signage about using the space?
I mean, I would talk to professionals who actually work with, not homeless people and those experiencing addiction of these things. To see what's actually been helpful in other communities, so I don't, I don't know right now, I'm just saying.
But maybe this is something that could be at a committee, at a committee level, and say, okay, you know, this is something we wanna look into, right? And we wanna, and maybe we start talking to these partners and these nonprofits, and maybe that's how, as a function, instead of bringing the entire body of the commission together. To have these kind of spitballing, talking about it, brainstorming, maybe it's a committee function at first, and then. Recommendations to the commission, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think, um. You know, I think all of these changes will only do so much, right? People won't sleep on a bench, they'll sleep on the ground where the bench was, right, so. And then you have problems where then people are dying, cause they're actually on the surface of the ground instead of a buffer, right? Um, and so, I, I think the, 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 the consideration I have. Which I'm glad that, you know, that, that there's some, there could be some other steps with it, is just that, you know, we're, we're almost at the limit of what we can do. And, um, it would be nice to, yeah, really consider what's next to actually make some changes on this front.
Commissioner.
So the, through the discussion, there's a couple mentions of folks. Getting put on buses, consent here. Uh, my question would be. My question would be, who is putting them on buses? And is there a political coordination that can happen to let whoever's doing that know we're kind of at capacity? We have a lot of services, but we only have so much capacity here. And I, I don't know, there may be something there to, instead of having people just showing up unexpected, make it a coordinated thing. Oh, sorry. Instead of just putting people on buses, have agencies in one area coordinate with agencies in another area and actually collaborate instead of just treating people like problems and sending them somewhere else.
I know. Yeah, exactly. I, I, we definitely, that was the problem, so far the problem with that, because yes, that has crossed my mind as well. But like the, the only problem I've had, the roadblock to it has been that we don't know. And that they're, they've been unwilling to let us know because, and I understand why, right? Because they don't, they would like the bus tickets to keep going and all that. But, so I don't, if we can get that information, I, I think that would be my first. I mean, I automatically think of like, well, who do I know in Wayne County and my SEMCOG people, right? There's SEMCOG Wayne County people, but they don't really necessarily work in this realm, but I'm sure they do, they know who does, right? But we don't know who to start with.
No, we have no idea.
So that's, if anybody can get that information, Teresa McKe, yes.
I think, I think if, if, I mean, it's up to Commissioner Calhoun, if he takes on that committee, you already know some of those nonprofit agencies to have a quick meeting, a roundtable, because that is exactly what happens. When you go to a nonprofit agency, they have tons of tickets because they need transportation to the store or whatever they're saying they needed for. There's no form to fill out and you get a large quantity of those tickets. But Macomb County has a lot of those agencies that work together. And once that conversation is had with those agencies, finding out, does Salvation Army after meal, do they get a ticket each time they come? Do they get a ticket if they have more than one person with them? Or how many do they push out? So you pushing out and you pushing out tickets. So it could, there is a thing called a limit that the agencies could provide. But I think, would that solve it? No. Because they'll find a way to get whatever that is that they need. I hear taking the bus, the benches and stuff down in the park, but we got to remember, we put that sign out there that it's a park. So believe it or not, what Commissioner Calhoun said, they don't need a park bench to sit down or lay down on. They will utilize the ground. And that's a normality, unfortunately. And mental health is high, as you know. It's high in Macomb County. It's actually higher than it is for those that are not housed. So it is deeper than the city commission to try to figure it out, but the answer will come from those that sit at the table that work with these people on a daily basis. It just got to start soon.
What, what can you, when you find a person's?
I know, but we can't right now. Like we're not, I, I understand and we can talk, okay, we can talk after the meeting, but we can't, we can't. Okay. Great, great. We can talk after the meeting and then.
What happens to these people when, if they're sleeping? I mean, I've been, was in Chicago this summer. They're right down on Lake Shore Drive. They're camped out. One guy smack dab in the middle. I mean, he had a nice, and he didn't leave the whole four days I was there. They are in Boston. They are in Birmingham. I will tell you, on the corner of Birmingham, there's always somebody trying to collect money. But again, the difference is the violence versus homeless. And what, what can you do if you find somebody sleeping in a doorway? You just tell them to move on?
Oh, we'll trespass them. If, as long as the, as long as the property owner wants them trespassed.
And what does that mean?
That means if they come back, then they technically, they could be arrested for trespassing. But then that, that welcomes in our next problem is the Public Act, I think, three ninety-three. It's basically citing release. It was put in, in place back in two thousand twenty-one is when it took effect. It was proposed in twenty. And basically misdemeanors besides domestic violence, drinking and driving, police officers are expected to issue a citation and send them on their way.
Well, I will tell you, I.
We have, there, there is an exception built in. If we believe that the, whatever the behavior is, this is for misdemeanors, one year and under. If we believe that the behavior is going to continue, then yes, we could take them to jail, but they have to be seen by a judge by three o'clock in the afternoon the next day. And that's even if the jails are accepting them. Because the jails aren't accepting the low level crimes like that anymore. Now, we have our own. I mean, yes, if, but now if the person is too drunk, they're going to hospital. And depending on how the hospital does that, I mean, they, we could send them in there and they could send them right out the door ten minutes later.
Sure. Yeah, I, it's, it's going to be a problem. I mean, people are going to be homeless. To me, the, the biggest thing coming out of that meeting last week was the violent one and what we can do. And, and there, I think they have to report it. They have to be willing to, because there's no, there's no magic wand to make it not happen. I had bought a house on Church Street. There were two homeless people sleeping on that porch for over a year, a solid year. I mean, the house was torn down now, but, and it was a terrible house. But they never even broke in. They just slept on the porch. They had, you know, feet of blankets and they had their own little setup. And if they knew the police, the neighbors called, I called, the police went, they just went right back. And there they were. They didn't cause any problem. He did drink, but, you know, he, there they were. And that problem is, 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 we're not going to solve it. But is, I do worry about the violence and the stealing and the bashing the head with rocks. I mean, now we're talking a different problem.
Right. And that can be enforced.
And that we can get.
Commissioner Yor?
I do think we would benefit from a smaller group that can, you know, really have interactive conversations, maybe a town hall. So people feel like they have a chance to speak. But there's, I've just been, since we've been here, like I thought I knew a lot about this, but there's a lot of information that other people have tried, how to, by design, take away loitering, whether, you know, take your benches and have seat dividers so people can't lay on them. If they're sleeping in flower beds, use hostile vegetation. Make sure you do this. If it's a covered area at the bottom of the steps, like I don't know, there's things we could suggest. It's not all the city's responsibility. But even like the lighting, if the city does a look, and this is a problem area, but it's not the city's area, then we, then we work with that business owner. But if it is a parking lot or an alley that, that is the city's responsibility, then we do our part too. But I think it's a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
And, um, so, yes, we, I would, I would like to work more on this as a smaller group. And it would, it's essential that other county departments are brought in on this too. Because they do have the, the resources and the staff who've done the research on that. Because, I mean, those are a lot of people who I call to ask questions to. So the one thing that you mentioned, Commissioner McGarrett, these organizations, after they get a meal at Salvation Army, right, or after they, they go to an organization, get some service, they just send them on their way for the most part, right? And I think that, you know, if you're getting off the bus and you're going to get a meal or to get something, and then you have nothing to do. So you, you have nowhere to go. And so I think there's a huge conversation to be had about what happens after you receive those services. Because that's when you go back downtown, it seems, right?
Yep. That's a good point. All right, well, we did not solve the world's problems tonight.
We tried.
But we did try. It was a good effort. Thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. We definitely need to hear it and I appreciate it. So we do have four B on here, discussion of city business. But I, we put it on there because that's the typical work session makeup. I know it's, I didn't want to beat a dead horse or don't want to keep you for more than, since it's an off meeting, but yes, Commissioner Yor.
I do have a question. That's just general city business related to something that came up last week about the food trucks. Are the food trucks something that the businesses voted on, the DDA voted on? Like how did we come to start having food trucks on a certain day in a certain place?
The county, the county, the county, sorry, the county administration came to us and said, we'd like to support your businesses, especially on, you know, on days that there aren't a lot open because, or we want to get people out of. And they had heard from their employees that they'd like to do food trucks. They said that they wanted to come out, want to get people out of their building to support the businesses. We said, well, we could set up with Mount Clemens food trucks, not food trucks from outside of the city, on days that the majority of the businesses are not open. So we did, we chose Mondays. This was a tentative, we brought it to you obviously because it came before the, for the DDA event calendar. So it was the DDA board voted on it and the DDA, and you voted on it.
So when, when businesses have concerns or suggestions, who should they take them to?
The DDA board is a good idea. And also is, they have the business meetings on the Wednesday, the first Wednesday. That's a good time. Or they can come before the commission.
I did have one other thing. We were having breakfast Sunday at Mount Clemens Grill, came out and the people who own the comic book store were opening up. And they asked us to come in and see their store. And it was, I have to say, they, they have done an amazing job with that story. And it's, but one of the things, and so I asked them if they had any problem with the homeless thinking about this meeting. He said, no. But one of the things that came up, so I just don't know what the, what our ordinance has said. But he said, the biggest problem he has is people on bikes, especially electric bikes, going down the sidewalk at, you know, as fast as they can go. And he says, walk, I walk out the door and I nearly get run over. And I said, I don't know what the ordinance is. I can't imagine riding on the sidewalk is legal or good. But you can't ride, I'm not sure. So I just said, he was going to try to come tonight. I thought since you're here and it would be a good time to, I don't know.
And I don't know the answer to that either. Do you? And I was gonna say.
I don't know on that. I mean, a moped, you can't.
There was something about skateboarding downtown?
Yeah, there's signs. Right. So, and, but also like, I wonder if there's other, if there's now like other cities doing things about electric bikes in particular because of, they're motorized, but you know, so.
Different animal.
I think Detroit and Royal Low Carb Ordinance is specific to that, to the electric bikes.
We'll have to look into it.
That, and should they call you? I mean, should they call the police then on that? Or they're probably long gone by the time you would get there because.
Is there any state law on that?
Bike.
Okay.
On streets.
Where do you ride them?
Really want to get down to it, kids aren't supposed to ride in power walk down the street either, down the sidewalk either. So that's like.
Oh, Lord. That would be some trouble.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll look into it. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah. Yes.
Since we have you here, Sergeant Jones, we mentioned the speeding. It's just been a discussion that's been over email and that we've brought up. And so I don't want to hold everybody up, but I just wanted to just kind of like recap our discussion on, on what we, the options we have to work on some of the speeding. That's all.
Yeah, well, some of the suggestions you gave to me, they're on the agenda for the Traffic Safety Committee as well as come up with ideas on things that we can do on our own or conjunction with, whether it's the sheriff or anybody. We're just talking about speeding. What, what can we do as the sheriff department, as the city or whatever to help with speeding problems?
We talked about it just last week. And, I mean, I get the emails for when the complaints come in and, you know, we'll send either, I'll let them guys know. I have a board that I put the traffic problem areas. They're the same, I mean, I never have to race like three or four of those streets. It's always, and it was back in two thousand ten when I worked out here as a deputy. So Canfield, Huron, those are always problems. Dickinson, Rathbone, same thing.
Church.
Church, Robertson. They're all up on the board. I mean, the traffic cars go through there, the Mount Clemens cars go through there. They, they do their targeted patrols. Sometimes they get some, sometimes they don't. We have like a, an electronic speed sign that we put up. I believe it's on Canfield now. But we've got one or two more. We can put up different places, stuff like that.
Thanks. I, I know we talked about, I just wanted to address it because there have been a couple of people who've come, I'm sure you're going to mention in the next, your next comments, but just because we had you here, I wanted to bring it up because I know the speeding was something else that people have been bringing up.
You know, speed control, traffic control is, is done by a lot of the deputies, all the deputies that work out on all the shifts. It's time permitting, obviously, you know, busy days that they're running a call for call, they're not going to have too many times to be traffic stops. So other days where it may be a little slower, it's when they're going to get more of their targeted patrols in. It's not that it doesn't, not that it doesn't happen daily, and it does, but just.
Other calls take priority sometimes, right? That makes sense.
Yep. But though that, if a problem area comes in, they, they know where to go. So that's what we do.
Cool. All right. Anybody else have anything under discussion of city business? How about a commissioner comment? The room, yes. Commissioner, either one of you.
Go right ahead.
No, please.
Beauty first.
Hold on.
I think this, it's interesting. This was a, not so much as an eye opener, this meeting, because I think all of us know what the issues are. This isn't an issue. It just came up last year. It's been an issue for as long as I've been involved in the city. We've had day, years when it was a real problem. And then there were years when things were quiet. So it just really all depends on what is happening. And right now, I think that it's just nationwide. You can see it every single day on TV, that there's a problem with people on the streets, with mental illness, with drug abuse, whatever have you. I think having a committee to talk to the different services we offer, good luck. Because each one of those services is doing it just for what their purpose is. If it's there to feed them, if it's there to house them overnight, you're not going to get a consensus of these people to work together to, it just isn't going to happen. I'm sorry. I don't want to be a downer about it. Because they all are aware of what our problems are. They all, all the services are aware of what they're dealing with. So I think the point that I take here is, we're going to do what we've been doing in terms of call the sheriffs if there's fighting, if there's people out there defecating or whatever have you, call and they'll work on that. But we're not going to solve the whole issue with our so-called homeless situation. I think, I think you're doing a great job. I've seen, I was downtown the other day, the patrol walking. I think that's the biggest thing. Years ago, we had one designated person that walked that street and Tony did a great job. And we, that, those were good years. Those were good years because we had him, you know. So I guess that this is nothing new. It was good to listen to what everybody had to say. But I think dealing with the direct issue, which is right now what's going on in Rotary Park, let's see what we can do there. If we remove the benches, put different benches that they can't sleep there, put something on the walls so they can't sit. I mean, I think those are all ideas, but that's to me is the issue here. We're not going to solve the rest of the world's issue or the rest of the city's issue with our homeless. We have at least twenty-six churches and probably half of them feed people. Half of them house people. It's a situation that we have. So I, again, I think it's going to be an ongoing conversation for this commission for many, many years. Let's deal with the issue that we have right now, and that is Rotary Park. And what can we do to eliminate or at least, you know, try to minimize the issues down there? And that's what our job is, to make people feel safe. And right now, from what I've seen, there is an issue, you know, there. I saw the video of the fights. But I think you're right on the spot by going there. By the patrols walking to me is the best thing you can do because it does deter people from acting up when they see somebody walking. So, you know, but I think bigger issues, we can chop away at them, but I would think that we want to concentrate on what we can do and not what we like to do in the big scheme. we wanna concentrate on what we can do and not what we'd like to do in the big scheme of things, but that's my two cents.
Thank you. Commissioner Calhoun.
Oh, well, I I think you had some good points. I, um.
You don't have to critique me.
No, I'm not gonna critique you. No, I just, I I just want, um, but I mean, I think there are, um, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And I think uh, there are a few conversations that could be had specifically related to, for instance, like what happens after someone receives services. That would be good conversations to have. And like you said, it it's good to know that um, this isn't a new problem, that there are people who have, who are experienced in working on it, so. Um, yeah, I I would like to see a solution there, but uh, I I got, I got a little hope here, you know, I got a little hope.
Always have to have hope.
Um, and then um, I just wanted to mention uh, the passing of Dave Tercel. Um, he was a real, I mean, he was just a, an amazing leader in our community as a volunteer and um, I think every single one of us knew him. And uh, so, you know, it's just, it's such a huge loss.
Yeah, I read a proclamation at his funeral today, and I'll read it at our next meeting, and then we'll do a moment of silence too, because he was pretty special.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it just, uh, so, yeah, just what a loss, and so I I wanted to mention.
I did not get through that one without crying. It was a tough one, for sure, yeah.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thanks. Commissioner Reiki, you got anything?
Uh, yes, uh, so I'm glad we've identified a couple possible additional steps we can take. Uh, I think the the lighting's a big thing, and some extra lighting in Rotary Park may be part of that as well.
Yep.
Because if it's really bright, people aren't gonna sleep there either, but, you know, you gotta balance that with not blinding the businesses either.
It shouldn't be there if it's dark.
Yeah, because it's closed. Um, I am glad we had this meeting because it gave us a chance to understand more of the scope and the details of of the issues. And I appreciate that, the repeated framing it of, there there's a difference between the challenge of homelessness and the challenge of uh, mental health and drug abuse issues. And they are, they are not mutually exclusive, but they're not a hundred percent overlap either, not even close.
Sure.
Um, ultimately, I do hope that the businesses and residents will continue to contact the police when there is a crime so that the crimes can be dealt with, because some of this stuff is crime. And whether there be drug abuse or mental health issues, uh, assault is assault.
That's right.
And uh, that's that needs to be dealt with through law enforcement.
Yes.
Um, same thing with vandalism and everything else.
But, but I'm finished.
Uh, so uh, I appreciate the work uh, that you guys have been doing. Um, you know, we, I remember last year when we uh, had that, you know, things really kinda picked up and you guys were able to get things under control and and level things out. Uh, I hope we're able to find uh, more uh, things that we can do to work on it. But uh, for anybody else that's looking for opportunities to work on this and other issues of the city, there are openings on our boards committees and commissions that are available, and you can contact the city for more information.
Thank you, sir. Yes, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Yor, do you have one?
Uh, nothing additional, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGarrett?
Um, um, wisdom has spoken, experience has spoken, and I think you have a point. Um, but it doesn't hurt to try. At least we can say we did try this option. Um, with the challenge that we have. Every time you come here, sir, you speak, you share something new each time. And tonight, you shared um, a lot of new things unaware, and that I personally was unaware of. Been in Mount Clemens all my life, um, was personally unaware of. And eventually, call it what you call it, but I think that eventually, we will see this go away. Because you will always have the poor with you always, but you don't always have people that do crimes and stuff always. And you're absolutely right, the appearance is is enough, the respect and the scare. I think if we get back to it, I don't know if it was because of the timing for the presence of the police down there when they first, when we talked about this last year and they started, people were coming back saying it was doing better. And then now it's back to, we have that problem again, so I don't know if the, if it slowed down or if it's not enough men to to go out and do it. But I think that's gonna be the answer, because it's just like a child at home. When daddy come in, you straighten up. So, thank you for what you shared, and everybody else as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Forni.
I think it's all been said. I agree very uh, much with Commissioner Dempsey, what her comments were. I don't think we will always have homeless. What I really wanna see, as I've said three times, I think already, is the violence um, find a way. So I hope that you'll patrol that area a little more and we can see what we can do and and solve that. When I think of organizations, as you said, McRest is a place to sleep at night and get dinner and breakfast, and they get their bag lunch and out they go. Salvation Army feeds them, off they go. I mean, I live just down the street from them. The one organization, though, that I will tell you, is that I've always been impressed with as the Capuchins. Because they find them a place to live and they give them a job. And they have a bakery there, it's called On the Rise, and the the uh, peep, their guests, they they have a place to live. They learn the bakery trade, they they get paid. Some of it has to be saved so that when they finally leave, they have something to get pay, an apartment um, down, you know, for their first month's um, rent and stuff. It's an amazing organization. Obviously, there is limited capacity. And you, it's very difficult for somebody to get in because it is always full. But it's very difficult for these organizations to, it takes a lot of money and a lot of space and time to be with them morning through, you know, twenty-four hours a day. But you might talk to them because they do an amazing job down there. And um, see what what they might have to offer. And Grace Centers of Hope in Pontiac, there's another one that finds jobs, builds houses, gets housing for people. And um, is not just a meal.
Not to disparage McRest or the churches or Salvation Army, because goodness knows, when you wa- see all the people lining up Salvation Army, I'm sure most of them really need that meal. That's all.
Thank you. Um, I, of course, did owe to everybody, and I wanna make sure that everybody just understands a lot of the concerns that were put in the paper. A lot of the concerns that were brought to us last week were about crime. Crime should be reported to the sheriff. Crime can be enforced. And I totally forgot that we have an ordinance on the book for every park closes at dusk. That can be enforced, and so there shouldn't be anyone in Rotary Park after dusk. That's totally enforceable. So I'm hopeful that that is re- a reminder to all of our deputies that that alone can move people along from Rotary Park. I'm ex- I'm um, encouraged by the list that we came up with on things that we can do. And um, yeah, look forward to next Monday for our regularly scheduled work session and uh, commission meeting. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.